Mrs. Kuy, I think that's it. Thank you so much. We appreciate you.
All right. Our next item is an update on school safety and security. And Mr. Pritchard is coming forth to update you on our current efforts, ongoing efforts, and what we can expect related to new initiatives. All right, Mr. Pritchard?
Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Cashwell. I'm happy to be here today to provide updates on school safety and security in ACPS. School safety and security is on the ACPS cornerstone and a shared priority for all of us, so I'm pleased to share that we have a number of items to report progress on and new resources to support this work. In my presentation today, we're going to provide a quick overview of the many layers of safety and security measures ACPS continues to keep in place. I'll then provide an update on a few projects and new resources that have been made available to ACPS in recent months. Finally, we'll conclude the presentation with an overview of the field test of metal detectors and weapon scanners. I want to begin, however, by introducing John Casula, who is now serving as the ACPS Emergency Manager. You all know John from his previous role as ACPS School Safety and Security Coordinator, and we're thrilled to have him serving with us in this new capacity. John, if you'll please stand up and give everybody a nice... There we go. As you know, ACPS has many layers of security in place throughout the division, which are noted above. No individual layer is foolproof, but rather the combination of these layers helps support the safe learning environments we strive to provide every day. In addition to the logistical layers noted above, each school has established emergency response protocols. These detailed plans are not shared publicly; however, they are routinely reviewed with school and division staff. Annual and ongoing safety and emergency training is also provided for administrators, school counselors, school security officers, and other designated staff. Additionally, safety drills of all types are practiced with students and staff. Training and drills often happens in partnerships with our Henrico Police Department and school resource officers, ensuring that all involved parties have shared experiences for responding to incidents. While we are confident in the logistic elements and protocols in place, I want to stress that technology audits and drills are just beginning. The two most important factors in supporting and maintaining safe schools are people and relationships. Staff members work tirelessly to create a positive school culture where everyone understands their role in school safety. This includes a robust relationship between ACPS and Henrico Police and Fire. The strength of our collaboration efforts is instrumental in ensuring that ACPS meets its goals for safety and wellness within the school environment. At both school and division levels, we communicate regularly and work collaboratively to respond to emergency matters, but also spend time to gather monitoring trends and issues over time and adjusting system-level responses as needed. The school resource officers in our building provide the most direct link between students and staff and HPD. We are grateful that with the additional SROs this year, we have better-maintained coverage of our buildings when the regularly-assigned SRO is out or on leave for training. We look forward to the complement of 10 additional HPD SROs being fully staffed. I know that the new camera systems and ongoing vestibule projects have been of significant interest, and I am pleased to report that all cameras are fully operational and working well. Training is ongoing with our staff, and we are currently on schedule to complete the last of the vestibules before the start of the 23-24 school year. This will conclude our vestibule projects. Since I last presented, we have received a digital mapping grant from the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services, which will reimburse ACPS for up to $255,000 for our approved 73 schools to create a digital map of our schools to assess first responders in a crisis situation. This tool was asked for by HPD, and ACPS secured the grant to assist with the request. We are now in the process of identifying a vendor to complete the work. Additionally, $5 million will be leveraged to fully fund the recommendations of the Blue Ribbon Safety Panel. You'll recall these recommendations came forward in the fall, following the work of the panel to identify ways in which incident response time could be improved. We're now working on planning and purchasing and soon installing a variety of additional layers listed above. Finally, I want to provide an overview of the field test of metal detectors. ACPS is now in the process of field testing a few different approaches to metal detectors and weapons detection scanners. Our goal is to try a few different methods in different types of settings in order to provide a robust information to Dr. Cashwell, so she can make an informed recommendations to you about division-wide next steps. We will be collecting logistical information from each field test site, conducting focus groups with families, staff, and students, surveying staff and family members on their experiences, analyzing the material and staffing costs, assessing the impacts on instructional time and on the perceptions of school climate and culture. Phase one of this field test will deploy traditional metal detectors at the entry points of three high schools, Mills-Godwin, Hermitage, and Verona. Phase two will host weapons detection scanners at two of our middle schools, which have not yet been identified. Weapon scanners allow for students to pass through without removing keys, phones, or laptops, because the technology is sophisticated enough to pick up only on weapons and firearms. This technology is being used in some school divisions around the country and is found in places like Busch Gardens and Disney World, as they are effective at scanning large numbers of people in a very efficient manner. In both cases, the measures will be in place for a short period of time, so that we can learn from the experience. What we learn from phase one and two of the field tests will inform additional phases that might be necessary to yield different or additional information. Principals will be communicating with their staff and families about the exact methods that will be used at their respective schools, so that students know what to expect. Our school counselors at those schools are also prepared to assist students who may be anxious about the changes in methods. Tomorrow, we begin posting additional information and FAQ on our ACPS safety webpage for all ACPS families. The entire field test will conclude by spring break, and we will report back to you at your April board meeting with our findings and recommendations. And at this time, I'll be glad to take any of your questions.
And if I might just jump in, Chair Kinsella, just wanted to note, Mr. Pritchard said that upcoming on our website would be the FAQ, but I believe it's already been posted. All those materials are actually already there, so just a point of clarity. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Cashwell. Thank you, Mr. Pritchard. Let's start. Any questions and comments, Ms. Ogborne?
Yeah, just a couple. Mr. Pritchard, you answered quite a few for me already. But one thing I would like to have, if you could share with us, and this is, you know, in an email or whatever, a list... You said that there are 22 security vestibules in design that will be completed by summer of '23. Could we get a list of which ones?
Yes, ma'am.
I get this question all the time.
Yes, ma'am.
And you said there were four nearing completion. Which four are those, if you know off the top of your head?
I know that Gateon Elementary School was one, and I think that is...
Excuse me, Mr. Pritchard. I don't think we want to disclose, Ms. Ogborne, respectfully, the list of 23 and which ones are nearing completion for safety reasons.
Yes. And we did provide that information previously with some of the background with our master projects list, but absolutely, Mrs. Ogborne, we'll get you that information.
Okay.
Thank you for catching me.
The other thing I was going to ask about the metal detectors, and I know that this is a pilot program and all of that, but at the three schools you mentioned, do we know yet who will be staffing those to screen the kids as they come in?
Yes, it will be school staff and school administrators, and ACPS employees like myself will be out on site every day.
So it's a combination of identified members of their current team who have gone through training, as well as members of our central safety and security team?
Okay, because my concern, to be quite frank, is that I don't want this to be yet another task for our current staff members and administrators, who are already overworked. So I'm assuming if they're going through training now, this is something they've been able to figure out how to find the time in their day to be screeners?
Yes, ma'am.
Any pushback from them that this is an issue? Because I know that if we implement this, and we have it in multiple schools, we've got to have people who man that, and that staffing of this is one of my concerns.
Certainly. And I would note that for purposes of the field test, individuals identified at a school who may be assisting with the field test may not be part of a recommendation for a permanent standing procedure. Some certainly would be. I mean, administrators are routinely involved in any kind of security issues that may happen at a school when it comes to a student maybe being in possession of something they should not, our SROs, our SSOs. So a number of the staff who would be assisting, while not familiar necessarily with metal detectors upon arrival, have had similar roles in the school that deal with student conduct. So that's not outside of their scope of responsibility. But certainly understand exactly what you're saying, is that, you know, in addition to looking at the equipment being used in the field test and all of those logistics, that we're looking at, what are the human resource implications here, right? What are the right number of people needed to do this appropriately? What kind of training needs to be on hand? So that is another piece we're studying. And then, you know, as Mr. Pritchard mentioned, while we're collecting data about certain logistical pieces of the field test, we'll also be holding focus groups with the people involved. So that would be staff, students, families, to get their perceptions. And certainly, this would be an opportunity to formally gather feedback related to, to your point exactly, Mrs. Ogborne, what is the, you know, experience for those staff members involved in the field test as screeners?
Right. Well, and my last question, and I'm going to state it the way it's been said to me, not... It's not an editorial comment, because you said this will be completed by spring break. So why that timeline? Why does it take... If you could explain to the listening public, and again, this is a question I get, the logistics of it taking this long to do a field test? I know we've got three schools identified. You said there will be others. So why does it take until April to get this done?
Well, certainly, you've brought up some of the points. There are people involved, our safety team, and so we'll be sharing those resources with each school on the days that they're actually participating in the screening, as well as gathering data and the focus groups and so on. So we want to make sure that we're looking at all aspects and that we have those pieces complete by that date. So each of the high schools involved in the field test is actually participating in five days of metal detector screening. They may not be five consecutive days, depending on the way we're staffing those.
All righty. Thank you so much. That's all from me.
Thank you, Ms. Ogborne. Reverend Cooper?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you so much, Mr. Pritchard, your team, for this presentation. I know everyone is excited to dig in. So first question, Slide 5. Can you clarify for our new camera systems, were new systems installed, upgraded for all of our schools or certain schools?
Our secondary schools receive the camera upgrades. And again, similar to locations with vestibules, we have not released more than that.
I know we've spoken to concerns regarding the data we would use for our security cameras and the extent of the capabilities of new technology. So to clarify, do these security cameras have facial recognition capabilities?
I mean, we have software that doesn't really go through that kind of detail. It's not something that we would get into.
It is not law enforcement facial recognition, and we shared some of that information in a previous presentation about the cameras. I'd be happy to provide you a summary of that.
Okay. Thank you so much on that. So can you speak to real quickly how the three high schools were selected to be a part of Phase 1?
Well, we tried to go through and select all of this stuff through where it was going to encompass all five magisterial districts. Looking at the high schools, you have one that was in the East End, one was Central, and one was Western located.
We're also looking particularly at the designs of the building, so we wanted to certainly look at geographic representation, but more specifically, looking at campus layouts. You'll notice they're different at the schools that were selected, particularly with Verona being an open campus, and looking at how different layouts in the school building would affect the way we're able to implement various types of metal detecting and weapon detecting equipment.
Thanks, Dr. Cashwell. So, Mr. Pritchard, go to Slide 8 if you could. Quick question. It says Phase 2 will inform whether additional phases, test sites will be necessary. What will we be looking for to make determination? I see on Slide 7, we'll be assessing logistical implementation, cost impact, and instruction time. So in other words, do we have a baseline that we're working from to determine if implementation will or will not be cost-effective?
Well, I mean, that's the reason why we're going to actually take the data and take a look at it and see what's going to happen. I mean, this is the part that, you know, this is the part that we're looking at of what kind of impact we are going to have when we start randomly start selecting students and pulling them through and going through this process and what impact it's going to have. We don't have a baseline yet to kind of go off of. I mean, we know that we have several things that we have to look through.
Yeah, and I would note that, you know, again, a field test is an opportunity for us to learn if and how we might implement these in the future, where, for example, a pilot might be early adopters of something that will then be implemented school-wide. So I want to be clear the difference here. And so, you know, with this field test, you know, we're looking at a number of angles, as Mr. Pritchard described, a number of things we'll be collecting data on. And it may be that part of the feedback we collect leads us to need to ask another question, which means we could do some other things in Phase 3. So I think that's... And we want to leave ourselves enough runway to do that, so that this is truly an exploratory field test, where the data that we're gathering from Phase 1 and potentially Phase 2 are helping us learn. And it may be, while we've identified some questions to ask and some things to look at, additional questions may surface in Phase 1 or 2 that we may need to work through in a Phase 3.
No, I appreciate that, because I want to really emphasize that we have as many students involved, because I hear from students in my district, particularly our middle and high school students, who have shared their fears and anxieties related to concerns pertaining to safety and security of their school and in general. So that's so imperative and so important. So kind of the last thing I want to kind of say, Dr. Cashwell, so how can we disseminate this information, even if this is presentation, to each magisterial district? I say that to say, we have 73 schools, and each school, each magisterial district has different needs. And, you know, we have the overall, the macro version of our safety and security, but also the micro. Because as you and I've talked about, it's important that our constituents know that every school is just as important as the other school.
Absolutely. And I see Mrs. Cox coming forward. I know she's been working to make sure we have some updates on our broad safety page, and of course, our administrators do an incredible job of communicating their specific school safety plans.
Yes. Actually, this week, it will be... Or I'm sorry, next week, the School Board Corner will focus on school safety in both our binder and clipboard communications to families. We're creating some videos that will go out in advance through our school messenger system that goes directly to families. They don't have to come seek the information. It's delivered to their inbox. That will have an explanation of the process and some demonstrations as well. And then, of course, we'll be sharing information through our social media, which is where we find most of our students most of the time.
Thank you, Ms. Cox. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Cooper. Ms. Atkins?
So thank you for this presentation. Consistent discipline and safety protocols are crucial to any successful public education system. And so I know I've said that before, but I really do think that we have to have these presentations aligned with discipline, so seeing discipline and seeing safety. So I just wanted to share that. And I do know metal detectors certainly are, you know, can be a risk reduction tool, along with all the other safety measurements that we are doing. So I'm going to share just a few thoughts, and I do have a few questions as well. So sometimes, the presence of metal detectors or wands or scanners makes a school feel unwelcoming. Can you share with me any plans, and I know we're in pilot, or perhaps consider, as we're capturing data and input, how we're going to make sure that our schools continue to be this inviting, inspiring, welcoming place?
And I think part of it, too, is the relationships that are built every single day at our school, and I think that that's an important part of it. And this is just a step with the people that are there every single day, greeting those kids in the hallway, talking with them, and so forth. And I know that we are looking at several different methods, and some of them is a lot less intrusive than, let's say, metal detectors. Weapons detection is a lot less intrusive than weapons than metal detecting. So I think there are ways that we can lessen this and make it less eventful for people as we go through this. But I think that through this field test that we're going through, we have to look at all possibilities of what's there, so we can collect the data and make the best-informed decisions. But I think it still boils down to the relationships that are built every single day within the school.
Absolutely. I agree.
I was going to say, and, you know, certainly to your point, and it's an excellent one, you know, that is one of the things we're always balancing, and particularly it comes to our safety procedures, making sure we're creating a welcoming environment that's conducive to learning, our core business, but also doing so in a manner that makes sure we're implementing every safety strategy, you know, that we're able to. So that's going to be, I think, an important part of the focus groups and hearing from students about the degree to which this may affect the school culture and environment in regard to that piece. And we're very interested to hear from the students involved and the staff, but particularly related to that point you're mentioning.
Thank you for that. And then, some students also in conversation have shared that actually metal detectors may make them feel less safe, and that, you know, some students may need help understanding their emotions, understanding their feelings, and even understanding the conversations that are happening at home about this effort as well. Are we also providing additional, maybe, counseling support, as well as training our counselors as well on this effort?
Yes, ma'am. I know that... I will say, this has been a great collaboration for myself to go through this with a lot of different people within our departments and go through this. And I know that Dr. Hughes has reached out to her staff and the school counselors to make sure that they're ready to deal with this as we go through, just like we would if we went through canine sweeps as well.
Yeah, and I would add to that. So our central school counseling team has been in touch with the school counseling teams at each of the three field test schools to have that very conversation, so that they're prepared. And they may work to identify any students they may already be aware of who may have anxiety or concern, so that they can proactively address those and make sure they're able to reactively address any concerns that may come up. And I know they've also looked at making sure students who may have other unique needs, perhaps exceptional education or so on, that there are social stories and other tools provided to help them understand that things may look different in regard to the school day than they've looked before.
Thank you for that. So some of... I'll just share some of what has been shared with me from some students, is that it feels like they're being treated as suspects, or the other one is that their privacy is invaded. And I think, you know, when we're thinking about how quickly or how easy access to information is, particularly social media, I'm wondering if the team would consider reading materials for our students. Many of them asked, is there something that I can read, that I can go through to better understand? So just something to consider as you're thinking about how you're reaching students, please also allow books to be a tool as well, because there are many that really want to read it on their own time by themselves. I'm glad to hear about the focus groups. I'd love to hear more from a wellness perspective, making sure that there are brave spaces where they can share this information. And so as you're thinking through that and brave spaces, I'd love to hear more about what those brave spaces look like.
Yes, and I would add, you know, helping students and/or staff members or visitors to the building, because in some of the scenarios, we would actually be screening visitors at parts of the day. That's one of the pieces of the field test. You know, Mrs. Cox mentioned a variety of ways we're going to work to make sure there are tools and resources for all of our families, but particularly our field test schools, where students and staff and visitors will be experiencing something different upon their arrival. I think one other great tool, in addition to resources that might be read, are video. And so there are some videos being created that actually show our team conducting this and going through exercises, so that students and families can actually see what they might expect upon arrival to school before the field test begins, and also others in the system have an opportunity to see what it looks like in action.
And I appreciate that. I think as many communication methods as we can find to reach families, because it's not just isolated to students. And so again, I'll just push one more time for the feedback that I've received, is for some level of books or reading materials that a student can read isolated with themselves or with their family, so their family can learn as well. So wanted to share that, just off of a screen with a book or some level of reading material. The other thought that I have, and so this is probably more a communication question, but in thinking about sometimes, you know, schools can have a negative perception when they have metal detectors. I certainly think we need them. However, I also want to hear just a little bit more, not on the training part, but the negative perception part. How is that... What plans are in place to communicate that in a positive way beyond just the experience?
I mean, that's something that we'll go through, and I mean, I think as we go through this and we collect the data and we determine, we come together as a group and we start determining what are our next steps, that's something that we'll talk about and make sure that we put in play as far as better communication about this and what it's going to look like and how it is going to affect the school.
Yeah, and I do think that focus groups in this particular topic is a wise choice. But again, I'll just continue to use the word brave space. I know oftentimes in our focus groups, we might want to choose a classroom, but I think when we're talking about something like this, that it is very important that we are careful with the space that we use and how we make it brave, so that students are comfortable sharing how they really feel. And so I think that also plays into relationships. I think it plays into the positive perception as well. And so, again, in this case, for a focus group, let's make sure that we are being experts at the spaces we choose for folks to be brave. And then, you talked about training a little bit, and one question that I have is, will one person manage the equipment, search students, and then also the persons that are being trained? They're being trained on the equipment? Are they being trained on searching students? What is the training detail?
It's all covered. I mean, it's detailed in all of that stuff. It's bag checks, it's walking through the monitors, what's going to happen, searching the bags. It's all... It's everything. And everybody is kind of going through the whole process. So it's kind of grouped up into teams. There's no way one person can do all of this. So we're going to be working in teams to kind of man people through the machines and go through the book bags that need to be inspected on a day-to-day basis. And then, every... All of us went through wand-ing training as well. So if we were unable to identify anything on their persons, but yet the metal detector's still going off.
Right. So once they would go through the metal detector, then potentially the wand would be used. And so I was just wondering, again, back to staffing. I have concerns about staffing as well, but more on the training end, because I think that it can become very overwhelming to learn the equipment, be the individual to search, be the individual to also make sure that if there's any issues with the machine, that they have knowledge of that as well. So I look forward to learning more. I'm grateful for your effort and your team's effort, because safety is a priority, and it is going to take testing to get as close as we can to be effective. But again, please consider the well-being around those focus groups. I'm also concerned just a little bit that we don't just pick a classroom, put folks in it, and ask questions. I don't think that's the right way to go for this particular topic.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Atkins. Mrs. Shea?
Thank you, Ms. Kinsella. I want to start by thanking the board and our counterparts and your team, Mr. Pritchard, for the funding and the implementation of the new camera systems. I've heard from my administrators that it's really been a game-changer in helping manage their building. And so thank you. Thank you for that investment. Swipe cards, I won't talk about the... I won't disclose the specific... I won't talk about the, I won't disclose the specific location, but you and I have talked about it, Dr. Cashwell and I have talked about it, at one particular, particularly at one location in my district. I continue to be concerned. And do we have any timeline on when we might see those?
A lot of it just depends on when we're able to get those resources in. I mean, like everything else, I mean, if they're available, we'll work on this as soon and quickly as possible. If there's a lead time, then there will be a delay in that. But I know with the funding that was granted to us, we are moving on that stuff now. We have a project manager in place. And so, we're moving forward with the Blue Ribbon Panel recommendations and whatever's there, we're going to start attacking right now.
Thank you. And I'm glad to hear that that funding has been allocated from our, has it been allocated from our partners?
It did need to be allocated. We were able to identify funding to begin that work.
Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you so much. When we talk about an increase in canine sweeps, is that a slight increase? Is it a significant increase? I won't ask you to give me the specific percentage figure off the top of your head, but what are we talking when we talk about increasing canine sweeps?
I mean, it's an increase. I mean, a lot of it, too, depends on our partnership with HPD and when dogs are available to do this.
So you'll recall in December, I made a request to HPD to increase the frequency of those canine sweeps. And so, again, the schools were traditionally having canine sweeps at a certain cadence, and we've increased that.
Wonderful. As we turn to our field test, Dr. Cashwell has already kind of articulated the difference between it being a field test versus a pilot. I appreciate that clarification. I had, I'm concerned and I'm disappointed that we are at a place where we have to talk about metal detectors. I don't think that's something any of us, a place any of us want to be. I understand why we are having this conversation and why we are here. When we, when we talk about the focus groups, how will the focus groups be chosen? You mentioned that they'll involve staff, students, and families. So how will they be?
Our Department of Research and Accountability, who are trained in collecting data and making sure that we're using all best practices, and certainly, your feedback's been taken into account there, will be handling the logistics, and we'll be happy to share that at a later date.
Thank you. So if there are stakeholders who have feedback that they would like to share about this, what is the best format?
Well, I think, starting off, what are you talking about immediately?
Immediately, or as we're going through the field test, any feedback that they have, what's the best format to be shared?
I mean, I think it would be, obviously, to contact those people that you have the day-to-day relationships with to start off and move that way.
I'll also just chime in on behalf of DARE, that we are building out plans to do both focus groups and surveys, recognizing that the entire school community may want opportunity to provide input on surveys, but then smaller focus groups may also yield some really rich information and feedback for us. So we anticipate having those available for the whole school community and the participating sites, so that anyone impacted has an opportunity to weigh in on their experience.
Thank you. You know, and then, lastly, just to build on some of the things that Dr. Cashwell shared at our recent town hall on this topic, we're all hands on deck. And we need families to communicate real consequences for students bringing weapons, making threats, what they post on social media. And we also need all members of our community, especially those with students and children in their home, to properly secure their firearms and weapons. If students do not have access to weapons, they cannot bring them to school. And so, thank you for y'all's diligent work looking into this. School safety is of the utmost importance to, to all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Shea. And as Mrs. Shea highlighted, and we've highlighted before, metal detectors, whatever kind, are not the only thing that's going to keep us safe, right? If you could just reiterate one more time, all the layers that need to be in place, and perhaps highlight how successful, what has been successful in keeping our schools safe to date, Mr. Pritchard or Dr. Cashwell?
I was just simply going to note, while he was going to speak to that, there's a slide, Slide 3. I thought he might want to put that up while he was answering your excellent question, because it is a layered approach, and we certainly know that. It's a number of strategies that work together, not any one thing. And so, I thought that might be helpful.
And all of these things are in place and visible every single day within our schools. I think the most important part of it, too, is that human connection that we have. I mean, that's been our best resource in identifying problems and being able to deal with them upfront. And I mean, we have a lot of different resources. If you don't feel comfortable coming forward to somebody in the building, there are resources to where you could email and let somebody know that there's something going on as well. But it's that connection, it's that human element that has made the biggest difference in all of our, you know, solving some of our issues that we've had.
Thank you. I just wanted to highlight that slide one more time, and the layered approach that's been, that's kept our students and staff safe to date, because I know the board, as a board, we're hearing so much from constituents about metal detectors, metal detectors right now, why don't we have them right now? Why is it taking so long? To Ms. Ogbonn's point, for the field study, that it is so many of these existing school safety measures that have been successful to date, right? And the relationships leading into what you just said about our relationships, what is the timing of our 10 new SROs, so that our schools are always covered?
Well, and a lot of that, I know that HPD is working on that, and that's something that they staff. So we're working with them to determine when that's going to happen.
The positions were made available at the start of this school year. Like many organizations, there are staffing challenges. I know they were encountering some of that. But as they're able to fill them, then those resources are available to us. And we are grateful, again, for the increase there.
And I don't think this is a question for you, Mr. Pritchard, but as Ms. Atkins referenced, perhaps for Dr. Cashwell, as Ms. Atkins referenced, that the behavior conversation really goes hand in hand with safety. So, Dr. Cashwell, could you just highlight some of the additional behavior supports we've put in place to try to help support our students this year?
Absolutely. And so, you know, I would just summarize, and certainly could spend a whole other work session just on this topic. You know, we want to make sure that, first of all, our students understand what the expectations are of them when they're in our buildings, right? And so, that's done every year through reviewing our student code of conduct. So we want our families and our students to be very clear on what expectations are. And then, we want to help students meet those expectations. And sometimes, you know, we understand that takes time. And so, it's those relationships that are going on in our buildings, our positive behavior and intervention systems. You know, certainly, that's something we've worked on reinforcing when we're seeing positive behaviors, helping students who may be engaged in infractions, learn how to, you know, change those behaviors. So certainly, discipline plays a role in this as well, making sure that, again, clear expectations, very clear and consistent consequences that are laid out in that. And then, making sure we're also working to restore relationships when they may be broken, that we're working to support students on changing their behaviors when there may be a pattern of negative behavior developing. So tremendous work being done in our buildings to create that culture that's supportive of students and safety, hand in hand.
So would you, this is for either you or Mr. Pritchard, would you say we've seen an uptick, right, in behavior and safety incidents in our school, correct?
You know, I think that is correct. And we hear this often, and I know as board members, you often hear, we hear from the staff working in our schools that, you know, things feel more challenging post-COVID related to student discipline. And so, trying to really parse out what does that mean, you know? Maybe the numbers don't change, but the behaviors feel more challenging to address in class. So we want to make sure we're providing our educators and our families the supports that they need through school counseling services, you know, increasing the number of school counselors, the resources available, leveraging those advisory periods and those morning meetings each and every day in our schools. Those are all opportunities for us to work through. You know, what we know has been an ongoing challenge for our community, for our schools. And that's been a trend we're seeing nationally. So we're really wanting to make sure that we're putting those right supports in place to address this.
Do we anticipate any messaging around perhaps behavior and perhaps highlighting the code of conduct, right? Like, when this behavior happens, please see Page X. Because I know, I believe it was in the letter you sent to families. But could we just highlight, perhaps, this, the student code of conduct and the related consequence to the action, whether it's a threat, whether it's a weapon? Because the consequences are severe.
We can certainly think of ways to continue to make that clear and make that known. I know particularly our building administrators, when they're dealing with students who may have engaged in a fraction, are really clear to parents, but they're, you know, we ask that our students and our families sign that each and every year at the start of the school year. That's done annually, even if you've been a student with us for many years. So it is our expectation, when families and students are signing that at the beginning of each year, that they're acknowledging, they understand both the rules in the school and what the potential consequences are. But to your point, I think anything we can do to remind folks of that, we'll continue to look for ways to do that.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Mr. Pritchard, thank you so much for the presentation.
Thank you. And I do want to thank the board, again, for your ongoing commitment when it comes to school safety. This is not an isolated topic. In the five years I've been in this seat as superintendent and working with you all as board colleagues, this has been, it's ongoing work, an ongoing commitment, ongoing discussion. And you can see whether it's been updating equipment, adding additional resources, school counselors, mental health professionals. You know, each year, there's been careful consideration, the development of our budget and our CIP, that we continue to examine at every angle. And so, again, I thank this board for your continued efforts there and what we've been able to accomplish in regards to school safety over a number of years. We'll continue that work, and I know we're all committed to it. We'll look forward to reporting back related to the results of that field test.